This morning. So we need to approve the minutes. Okay, call me, please call door. Okay. I know. Got a second?
All second.
Okay, all those in favor? A unanimous it carries. Okay, now let's prove the minutes. For April ten.
Read through them. If you have everything correct, that would make a motion to approve. I'll say.
Can we get a motion in second? All those in favor? Okay unanimous it carries. All right. General public concerns. No one on Zoom, nobody in here. Let's go ahead. Ben, you're up. Good morning.
Couple items on the agenda today. Projects. The first one is to approve the plans and specifications for that. Multi-department storage shed here in the Dakota City. Gone through the specifications, I've taken him to a local contractor to have him look at them. He reviewed them. Uh, tweaked some. Line items on here and changed a. Timeline, basically have it done by the end of the year. And believe we're good to go. If the board approves it, I'll start sending out to. Some building contractors this week.
So what did you tweet?
Completion dates. Not a whole lot, really.
Get the other one down.
I haven't even gotten to that point. Morning. Worst come worst, we're pulling the thing down ourselves, but otherwise, yeah. The next step after this will be to. Put it in the paper for. Contractors to be able to put submit that it's to. Yep, sealed the sealed bids to tear it down, but obviously we'll want them to be insured to do so. Since they'll be on county property. I guess this is the the first step.
This is the actual layout?
This will be the actual layout of the building. Here's the overview of it. So one of the items that I did was increase the size of the concrete approach in front of the building. That way we can do our motorcycle testing. The treasurer's office. So this will be the new building and this will be the concrete out here forty foot by two hundred feet. Will be the concrete approach out the front. Believe the treasurer's office needed thirty by eighty or ninety feet. To be able to do their motorcycle testing. So I changed that, a couple of approach pads going into the entry doors and the. Overhead doors on the north side of the building.
Yeah, there's just gonna be like two bays that are gonna be like.
There's two bays that'll be drive-throughs. Yep, there'll be one for law enforcement and one for emergency management.
And that's gonna be. One here. And then one right there.
Yep.
Okay.
So you're looking at law enforcement, emergency management, courthouse, secondary roads. So.
System.
I mean, I guess my question is. Do we have that many motorcycle tests that we're gonna put that kind of money in concrete, I mean?
I can't answer that one.
I know, I didn't figure you would, but I.
What do they do now, right up out here?
They used to. Yeah, they haven't been able to do them lately. We don't have a place to do it.
Seventy-two, we did it out here in the parking lot.
Well, there's a fairly good chance of finding other uses for a concrete approach too.
Well, there's always, I mean, there's always a positive for having a concrete approach outside of.
Any building.
Any building. I mean, you're not tracking mud into the building.
Something in there and you need to back it out, to back it out on concrete. Or instead.
Yep.
And if you're gonna do it now, it's time to do it, not five years from now.
Right.
And if you're ever doing anything kind of a drive-through thing, it's originally this building.
Yeah, originally what we were looking at is if we were to ever lose our. Not really covenant, but our agreement with the the fairgrounds to do the. The drive-through mobile food bank, we'd be able to substitute this.
Or for any other need.
Right.
EMA would need for a dry through. Pickup supply type thing, whatever, where I think the countries. It gives them a hard surface in and out of the building.
Yes, yep, exactly.
And you. I think he showed Sandy, but this is the total building here then?
Yes, that'll be the building there. So the building dimensions are sixty by two hundred. Compartmental, law enforcement, emergency management, conservation and secondary roads. I'm sorry, what did I say?
You said conservation.
I'm sorry courthouse.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
So conservation isn't gonna have anything in it?
No.
Okay.
No, uh, with them acquiring the Rutland Shed location from us. What, two, three years ago, they've got ample storage now.
And I don't see anything in there for Rymers trucking. Awesome. Way to keep me wanting to do it. In the winter, just to be able to do that, but I don't think that's gonna work.
So if you have a concrete approach in this, there's gonna be a dry through area. Is there how much concrete back here? Is there gonna be in the back area?
I believe it's five feet out.
Five feet out?
Yeah.
Which ones is here? Yeah.
The the one on the left. Five feet by sixteen.
Five by six.
Just, just in front of the doors on the entrance. Five foot out by sixteen, five foot out by sixteen.
Gotcha. So you're only, those two areas are gonna have concrete back here and that's it.
But Dana, get the one clear to the west.
Oh, he gets that first one clear to the west.
Yep.
Gets the big one.
Okay.
The manager gets the next one.
Oh, one sixteen by fourteen, one sixteen by twelve.
Yeah, the emergency management doesn't need to be at all.
So that will give him ample rooms for all of. His. Stuff in there, the MA.
Yep, it is, uh. Uh, the same size or just a little bit bigger than the shed he's renting now.
And the next one's a courthouse.
And then the next one's the courthouse. Yep.
So they get a trailer and whatever, they'll be able to back that up in there?
So we've got a trailer right now with flagpoles on it. In there, so they'll be able to store the flagpoles in there. Typically.
Mower deck.
Either the mower or the snow blower.
Rotates.
Rotates. As well as you've got a enclosed trailer. Now that can be parked in there.
I was gonna say, yeah, because they wanted one for their elections, the trailer for. So that'll be, that's what I mean, both of them are gonna be able to be.
Yeah, that's that's pretty big area.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then all the stuff that we think we need to save forever.
Right.
That could be the backpack.
Well. If we did that between moving this stuff out of the basement, when we look through it. Then we can at least have a chance to. Pitch some of the stuff and maybe it won't make it to that shed.
Yeah, right.
Right.
That'd be the best.
Down in the vault area of paper or.
Name it.
Hey, a lot, mostly it's filing, 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 filing. And not much of it needs to be saved, I don't know.
Yeah, they gotta figure that out.
There's, there's.
Forever.
Payroll is forever, but it doesn't have to be paper copy.
It can be digitized.
Be digitized, but then you're burning, I would recommend burning or or shredding.
And then there's all kinds of old, old, old county books, these big leather bound books that are. You know, like they used to do the minutes in years and years ago that are down there.
Those could be about cows and everything else.
Yeah, very interesting reading.
It is, it is.
About cows.
Yeah, somebody sold a cow. That had to be noted, had to be noted.
I do remember that, we've actually got one sitting in the yard.
There you go. So Ben, you're just, you've been through this time and time again and you tweaked it like you said. You're just looking for approval of the plans before the bidding process.
Yes. Yep. That way I can start sending out to contractors and then. Uh, the request is for them to have the proposals back by eleven o'clock on Thursday, the twenty-seventh. So, yep.
I mean, so with this, we're gonna have the specifications as to how we want it built, then they're gonna give us a plan back. Or they're gonna give us their ideas to doing part of it in concrete, part of it steel, part of it, they'll build it the way that this specs.
I haven't read through this.
Shouldn't be. I mean, today's the seventeenth, that gives them a week and a half to be able to. Get get prices.
Bidding process is a long enough.
Uh, I haven't had a chance to read through all this. Is the building up on a curb at all, or is it the building actually on grade?
Uh, the building will be raised.
No, but the the actual wood structure, is it up on a cement curb or is it on a flat slab?
Oh, uh, I believe it's raised slightly.
I think I talked with you earlier about that.
Those are the water we drain.
Well, no, so your, so your wood foundations. Moisture there and it don't dry up, and you want it up on a cement curb. At least it's like. I mean, easy way is to pour flat.
Right.
But the easy way ain't always the best way.
When you hear if you get forty-five, like eighty?
Sixty foot wide building, so it's gonna be. Yeah, he's getting a roughly. Sixty foot by sixty foot. Building.
Think about putting their, both sides to the courthouse.
No, I didn't.
One door and the. Election stuff trailer in the other door. Don't go to the basement in the middle.
I originally had quite a few more doors and was asked to reduce the number of doors.
Cause they're twenty foot wide and they should be apart from side by side.
Yeah.
Should. And get them back in there. That. Trailer, if anybody's got an old hay rack, it's got a good running gear under it. It's shot, I welded the tongue back into it, it's bent. And it goes down the road like this. It dog legs pretty bad, you can't hardly back it.
I'll check, David, I used to have an old head mover. My brother still have that or if it went, it's the bean head.
That's an old hay rack, tires your shot on it and. It's in bad shape. And you can't hardly back that thing.
A general note? No.
Okay.
Now I got his footings fourteen inch by forty-two inch. Floor six inch thick. Eight inches wide. Truck, grosses six inch thick.
Yeah, yeah, I did.
So you want me to add, uh, basically. Raised lip all the way around.
It's not a curb, it's in. Well, a lot of times they pour the, there says footing, they'll pour footing all the way around those. And the footing will be up that six, eight inches.
That's what I'm looking for. I don't want the footing poured and then the floor poured on top of the footing, then the building sits on the floor.
Right. You want it raised.
Yeah.
That's a lot of them.
The interior does have steel.
That doesn't help though.
Supports are sitting on a raised concrete. Footing for height. It ends up, you know, like having for the. Supports are sitting.
Right. Oh, it says, oh, that's sixteen feet, never mind, I thought that.
And then. I I don't wanna be a stickler, but everybody's idea of a finished floor is different. I think there's different grade levels to finish. I think we should have some specification there.
I've got a relatively smooth trial finish.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I seen one spot that said smooth, smooth trial finishing that area, but. You know.
I mean, that's, that's the finish for the whole building is what I was looking at.
Yeah. I need to get back to you, what, there's several different levels of finishes. And you want it at a certain level, cause somebody, somebody said, oh, that's smooth enough. You know what I'm saying?
Yep. Well, I mean, usually you've got a light broom finish, you've got a smooth trowel finish.
Yeah.
Guess I didn't get too technical on that.
Well, sometimes you, concrete kinda gotta be, need to be technical on it, because. It's a one, one and done deal.
Well, anything else?
Might be second, what's called a raised footing.
In the asset term, I always thought it's called a curb.
The building is sitting on. I think Gary's gonna make one a while ago, but I'll make one for a motion to approve the. Give bid for the. Multi-department storage. Oh, second that.
With the noted.
The noted. With, uh, concerns and further clarification that it's a raid footing.
Yeah.
And the finish on the time specified.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Alright.
Okay, unanimous it carries. All right.
And also you've gotta make sure you've got the right soap to the drains. I'll, I'll tell you afterwards why I'm concerned about this.
Talking to drains on the interior.
Yeah, yeah, for what the percent of slope is on the floor.
We have to make sure that this thing is moving forward in order to get the.
Get the summer bid.
Time, well, with time.
To get the money spent before.
By December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, so we've got one more year to dedicate all of our.
Now, and prices are come down a lot.
Yeah.
Have they come down?
Yes, they're almost back to pre-pandemic.
Oh, good.
Except for steel, steel is still high price.
Steel's going down some now too. The second item that I've got on the agenda is to approve plans and specifications for the bridge replacement. With a double box culvert in Delana Township, section thirty-four and thirty-five. We called this one Tulliers Bridge for a number of years, it's bridge number seventy-eight. On the county inventory on Kentucky Avenue. A mile west of Highway Three between a hundred and. Fiftieth Street and Sixtieth, I think. Yes, between a hundred and fiftieth and a hundred and sixtieth street. We are looking at replacing the bridge with a twin twelve by twelve concrete box culvert. Plans are complete, we've received all the permits that we were waiting on. From the Army Corps. Uh, we're gonna work within the drainage district easements. On that, which is usually fifty feet from top of bank. On each of the four corners. Uh, Tullier has the ground on the east side. Billy and Linda Ford have the ground on the west side.
When's the proposed construction?
Uh, set a late start date of May first of next year. Yeah, I've talked to.
Big box, I mean.
Twelve by twelve.
Yep, it's a twin twelve by twelve.
That's a big one.
So it's, uh, similar to the one that's just down the hill from your place. So.
Granted, that's a pretty long, very, that is very long during each ditch.
Yep, I mean, it's right down near the bottom end of the dredge.
Yep, it's gaining on it. Would they, anyway, that that's late start date that they start?
They can start earlier, uh, talking to a couple of contractors and the suppliers for flexibility because. We're letting it later in the year. Suppliers are saying that their schedule is relatively full for. Manufacturing the box culvers, but contractors. That don't have a full plate yet could do this in the fall. Those that do have a full plate can schedule it and bid it for the first thing next year. So my guess is it's either gonna be a late fall construction or it's spring construction.
I don't know, do they make them that big out here or did that come from?
That'll end up coming from Iowa Falls. For the most part, they've. Switched this facility to strictly round culverts.
If it does happen to have, happen to harvest, it's saying a real main.
It's ten vehicles a day.
Yes.
There is no harvest traffic on this.
There's just.
There's, I'm sure there's some, but I mean, this bridge is low rated right now at ten tons, there shouldn't be any traffic going over it. Shouldn't, I said shouldn't.
So it shouldn't.
It shouldn't affect. Wait. Right, yep, I've talked to, uh. Talked to Chuck Thompson who farms Tulliers Ground. Explain to him what was gonna be happening and then obviously he was all for it.
Yeah.
Everything is in order, which it appears that it is, I would make a motion to approve the plans and the specifications. For said project, which is LC three nine three five zero six.
Okay, motion in a second, all those in favor? unanimous motion carries, alright.
And then I do have that just set for nine o'clock letting on May fifteenth, I did it on a Monday. That way it's. You guys aren't having to come in for a separate meeting. So. Uh, there's plenty of spots for signatures and you guys are done with the meetings.
May fifteenth at nine?
May fifteenth at nine, if we can get that on the schedule. You wanna try and sign left-handed?
That's a good letting for the culvert project.
That's a good letting for the culvert project, yep. Yes. Yes.
Did you hear any stories? I heard the Sioux had snow. Vaginal snow on the north end of the Sioux.
Uh, I didn't, my, my wife was up in O'Koboji Saturday and I think she said that they drove through quite a bit of. Snow and slush on her way back home yesterday. Luckily, everything we got hit the ground and it's.
Alright. Good, alright, perfect. For God, for some reason.
Maybe you should let Bruce.
Okay. No, they don't. We have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion second, all those in favor? Alright, we are in drainage.
Do we wanna do John first? It's here.
Yep.
Yeah.
It was nine, it's at nine o'clock, so I figured do it next. Hey, John, we're a little early, so.
Listen in.
Morning. How you all doing this morning?
How are you doing?
I'm good. Thank you. Okay, we'll start out with some good news, it's always pleasant to start off with good news. Let me talk about waters of the United States. You know, those of you who've been on the board for a while probably know this has been a. Issue for years and years and years, um, basically because we have. Administrations, uh, in Washington that seem to wanna play ping pong with us. Started with President Obama and his administration where they, well, let me back up a little. What the regulations used to say is EPA could regulate navigable waters, and the key word was navigable. Obama administration came in and took the word navigable out. So basically at that point, it said EPA could regulate any puddle in the United States. So it stayed that way for a while, Trump administration comes in, changes the rule again. So we're using a different rule on Trump administration. Trump administration goes out, Biden administration comes in. Changes the rule again, the other way. So we've had this sort of. Borneal ping pong match that has gone back and forth. Uh, why it's important to you all is that if, if EPA has the ability to regulate. Every single puddle of water in the United States, what that. Could mean for you is that anytime you all want to do a drainage repair. Or drainage improvement, uh, you're gonna have to get a Clean Water Act permit from DNR. And I think you all understand that that would not be a good situation when you've got. Twenty-six counties with. Twenty-six counties with thirty-six hundred drainage districts. Um, petitioning the DNR.
Or even private landowners.
Yeah, exactly. So what has happened that is the good news is that the Biden administration, um. Uh, put the rule in effect earlier this year and there were um, a number of different lawsuits that were filed. Uh, to stop implementation of the rule. And uh, the Iowa Attorney General's Office did sign on to one of those lawsuits. And uh, they joined with a number of other states and filed lawsuit, filed a lawsuit actually in North Dakota. Why North Dakota?
Yeah.
I think they were judge shopping. I think they, they thought they had a federal judge up there that would be. Well, I'll get the best. That's another part of the issue. So anyway, uh, the North Dakota judge issued a ruling last week, which basically. Put the order on state and, and said, we're, we're gonna put this. We're gonna put this on hold until we hear from the Supreme Court. And what the court said, I'll just give a little said, um. The court finds that the new rule is neither understandable or intelligible. Um, the treatment of tributaries is suspect. Uh, the treatment of wetlands is plagued with uncertainty. The rule requires states, landowners and counties, other affected parties to undertake expensive compliance efforts when their property may. Implicate navigable waters. Uh, the court agrees are serious constitutional concerns. So the court did not find much good to see about the rule and I would agree with them. You know, my reading of the rule, um, and you know, I, I understand I'm not an attorney, but my reading of the rule is that. The, the rule was not clear. And what that would have left is a situation of, um. Determination after determination and determination that had to be made at the local level, had to be made at the state level. And that's exactly what we don't want. So the court has come in and put a temporary hold on the rule. People are uh, waiting on the Supreme Court uh, on another case that has been pending and has been. Has been heard called the Sackett case. Uh, again, all of the. All of the presentations that the court have taken place, we're just waiting for the court to rule. And depending on how the court rules on the Sackett case. It really gets to the heart of what the EPA has the ability to regulate. So people are waiting this report to issue its opinion and at that point. Um. Things could start over again and the EPA potentially could have to go back to the drawing board and said, well, now we have clear direction from the Supreme Court. Um, so long as part of this is nothing, it's gonna happen quickly. And we have started being going along in this never, never land now for probably six or eight years because we have. Rules and we have lawsuits with stop rules and we have a new administration, we have a new rule, then we have a lawsuit to stop, I mean. So this has been going on for probably six to eight years. And I don't see it stopping anytime soon. But the good news is that right now the rule is not in effect. So we will continue to monitor that. Second thing I'd talk about briefly, um. As you know, we do have a drainage clerks uh, breakout meeting. That takes place during our annual conference each year. Um, and this year, uh, I was approached by um, drainage clerk. Uh, in another county who, who wanted the um. Consideration to be given of having a second meeting each year. Uh, that felt it was so valuable that. You know, I'm gonna try to schedule the meeting in the summer, for example, would be a positive thing. And so the. Clerks talked about that and did decide to go ahead with that process. So there will be a meeting. Um, in Fort Dodge on, I believe it's July twentieth.
We must have lost internet for a little bit.
I'll pivot over to the legislature, um, it has been, um, at least initially a fairly quiet year. Um, but in the last couple of weeks here, we have had um, a new bill filed. Um, that is House File seven eleven. And the background of this bill is there has been. As you know, uh, in the last few years, quite a bit of flooding that has taken place, particularly on the, um. Uh, western border of the state along the Missouri River. And there was concerns expressed, um. That the levees uh, in that part of the state have not been. Kept up and maintained as well as they should be. And due to that fact, the, you know, the flooding has been worsened because the levees are not doing the jobs that they were intended to do. Um, so that precipitated a study that was done by Homeland Security and Homeland Security is, has gone in and. Uh, looked at a number of levees uh, over on the Missouri Riverside. Uh, I did uh, sit in on a presentation, um, that was. Made about that study that took place, um, last month. Uh, and there again is uh, substantial concerns about. The levees in that part of the state and, and most of them frankly are not maintained by county boards and supervisors. They are trustee run districts. Uh, and they're, they're just not maintained to the level that they should be. Um, so the first thing that this bill is trying to do is to, is to create, um. A pot of money. Uh, that could be access to help uh, bring the levees up, up to snuff. And secondly, to put a rating system in place so that they're, they get to the most problematic levees, um, the fastest, so. Um, what the bill does, first of all, is create a um, pool of money of five billion dollars funded by gambling revenue. And that money will then be used by cost share, um, on an application basis to, um. To repairs and improvements to levees. And Homeland Security will come in and do an assessment of the levees and they're gonna do a numerical ranking, so. They really haven't said yet how that's gonna work, but you know, if you've got, if they rank them one to what? Five with five being the worst, obviously, they're gonna put priority on the fives. Uh, so that's, they'll have a ranking system, they'll have a pot of money that can be, can be used. Uh, to, to do repairs and improvements to levees and that bill. Did pass the House, I believe, and is now, um, gone over to the Senate. The second thing the bill does is, um, create an interim. Committee to do an analysis instead of getting drainage laws. The language that they have that does that is pretty wide open, so I don't think there are any real. Constraints on what they're gonna be looking at in terms of drainage laws, which is a little concerning. But. You know, from what we've heard, the legislation is well intended, uh. We have been in contact with legislators who will be on that committee. My understanding is Doug will also be serving on that interim committee if it does get funded, so I, I think we're pretty well protected. Um, and I think what the committee wants to look at, they wanna focus on, on. Of levees and of course levy law is part of drainage law. But they wanna focus on levees and see if there are. Um, impediments in the statutes that are standing in the way of, um. The levees being maintained and in, uh, top, top condition. And I don't know if I mentioned or not, but I, I, you know, I said in on this presentation, I did. Speak to the gentleman who gave the presentation. And I do have him on the schedule for the annual conference this year, so he's gonna deliver that same presentation at the annual conference, so. Uh, right now, nothing else much going on in the legislature, they're, um. Probably in the last two to three weeks of the session now. Um, which means the appropriations process is starting, so we'll be watching that very closely and, um. So far as I know, there aren't gonna be any more drainage bills that will, that will be looked at, so, um. For that, I'd be happy to respond to questions.
Well, with that piasco they had a couple of years over there on the Missouri, with all the snow in the Dakotas and. Arguing how much there are water they were gonna let come down the river. Did they ever figure out who gets to say? You can release this much because that wasn't that part of the flooding issue?
Yeah, they had so much snow melt, they were worried about the reservoirs upstream and they had to let it go on and downstream flooded people down.
I think, I think the core makes that decision, but I'm not sure that.
And you can bet it wasn't their problem.
Well, that's the, that's the point and I guess my question is, is. You know, one hand needs to know what they're doing up there and I understand the, the snow when it starts melting, cause. Supposedly there's still snow in Minnesota that's gotta come down through here, the rain here, the water, so we're gonna see some of that, but. I guess that's my question is, nobody seems to know who's gonna let theirs go or do they all let them go at once or?
Well, I, um, I could tell you that this is probably. Ten to fifteen years ago now, but I went over to, um. A public hearing that they were having on the Missouri River Master Plan and that's covered under that master plan. And I went over to, um. Represent IDDA and, and, and give our view on the master plan. And, you know, I, I had an expectation of what this public hearing would look like, but I was way off. Because they had it scheduled, I think, at eight thirty at night, eight o'clock at night. And. I thought, eh, maybe there'll be fifteen or twenty people there. And I went in there and there was this huge, uh, conference room in a hotel with probably. Three hundred people in the mountains. And they had set up the. Public hearing so that if you were an elected official, you got to speak before. Anybody else. Well, they had all these mayors that wanted to speak and they had all these kind of supervisors that wanted to speak and, um. It was after eleven o'clock. Before they got to the rest of the. Speakers that were on the agenda and I think I finally got on about twelve fifteen in the morning. And there were still. Twenty or thirty people that were waiting to speak after that, so I, I think I got, sort of got a taste at that point on how. What a big deal this master plan is. And as you say, you know, somebody's gotta make the decision and, um, it's really, really controversial in terms of. Cause they're trying to protect wildlife, they're trying to control flooding, they're trying to, to do a number of different things and you can't. Can't do everything, you know? One decision's gonna have a negative impact somewhere, um, so it is a, a, a very tough issue, um. And obviously the, the levees are part of that and making sure that they're in topmost condition, so.
I find it interesting that Homeland Security is the one that is determining, wouldn't that be the Corps of Engineers that would determine the levy rate?
I, you know, I don't know how Homeland Security was, was selected to do it.
Probably because of their authority.
Yeah.
Because see. The core engineers can act from a. And look at your levees, I doubt.
Yeah.
Cause they're.
And I think that the idea of having someone.
Determines what, what goes on in rivers though too. That's why, I mean, I just, I mean, they have the expertise in that.
I think the idea of having someone local do it too was. Part of the consideration, so.
My other question or statement would be, uh, we appreciate the fact for, um. You guys raising the amount of money that we can do on a repair. It's huge because our costs continue to go up and for us to even relocate machinery to. Do something, uh, at the, the rate that they had set, but yeah, for, we weren't hardly. Able to do anything and then when you, and nothing against our engineer friends that are here. But when we have an engineer that puts their stamp on it and says. You know, then they're gonna take a pretty good chunk of change, so I appreciate, we appreciate the fact that we.
The problem is trying to find, um. Trying to find a good number and I think, I, I think probably even the engineers would agree to fifty thousand, which is where we were, was too low. But. So then you have to answer the question, what? Yeah, yes.
So now we don't have to go back ten years now, but now it'll follow the state, the state.
Yes, it's, it's set by DOT, yeah.
So.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, that was a great benefit.
Yeah, and I've heard a lot of positive comment on that, I've, you know. There are some engineers that were upset and I, I understand that, but we're, we're trying to find some little ground and, um. We had legislators that when that was first considered that wanted to. I think we got some legislators that were talking about a half million dollars. And we were saying, you know, that's probably a little aggressive in terms of. What you can be spending without at least having an engineer look at it and, and they sort of backed.
Smaller board, one person makes that decision.
Right, right.
Sure. Well, not every county has a good engineer, we're lucky.
In my theory, you know, just because it was done once doesn't mean it was done right the first time. Sometimes you need to look at it.
Right.
And maybe go back and make sure that they did it right the first time.
Yeah.
Now, but we've had cases where we've had. Found out, geez, that crossing was put in ninety years ago, only put sucker in wrong ninety years ago, so you gotta redo it.
Yeah.
What is the threshold right now, John?
One, one thirty, it's higher than that even.
That's like one ninety-seven.
One ninety-six.
When the rule, when the rule changed, it was one thirty-nine and the eight bumper levels were probably stayed up.
Changed to one ninety-six late last year.
I guess another question that I've got, so with Iowa being one of the, I think it's thirty states now that are in this lawsuit. As far as load is. Do we have followed the strict enforcement's, uh, being for as far as?
Well, the Army Corps shouldn't be enforcing the new rule, so not, nothing should be changed in terms of what you all are doing.
So as far as us, when it comes to, uh, what they wanna call footprint disturbance. It's point oh three acres, so that means that whatever the stream channel is, the set of plans that I've got here right now. As a twelve foot. Stream bottom or twelve foot drainage district bottom. So I'm limited to, I think it's a hundred and eighty total feet to stay underneath that point oh three acres without having to file and. Wire weapon. So they, I mean, they've been enforcing it, they've been forcing counties to adhere to this.
Yeah.
Stricter guideline, I, I guess since the first of the year.
There's a, one thing Ben is that. This thing keeps changing and. So after the presidential administration changed, they dumped the old rules and then they came back with some modified version of. Pretty like pre twenty fifteen, they said to update with some court cases that came in. And is that where that, I, I thought that's where that point oh three would come in it, but your understanding is this new rule that came out just this year? Was the point oh three?
That'd be like, we've we've just been following this point oh three year for the last.
The new rule was was.
Okay, well.
The new rule was released at the end of last year.
Right.
But according to regulation, the rule does not go into effect until it's actually published in the federal register. Published in the federal register. Um in in this year.
Okay.
And actually went into effect in Iowa for about. Two weeks. And I know I had engineers calling me and they said, what do we do, and they said. You know, there's a lot of stuff going on, we're waiting on the North Dakota case, we're waiting on the Supreme Court. Um and from all the indications, those are gonna be positive outcomes, but right now. Rules in effect, and um like I said, that only lasted about two weeks, so now in Iowa, the new rule is on hold.
So maybe the point oh three actually took over when.
That's what I'm wondering, I remember hearing, I remember hearing talk of well before. Well, before the January one of this year was when that new rule, like if it was a two phase thing. They went back to some old thing that was modified. And I think that's where the point, I I believe that's where the point oh three came in, and then they did more, even more strict stuff here a few months. Yes.
Cause I I talked to Farm Bureau um. When I had some engineers calling me and said, what's going on, and Farm Bureau. Was gonna have um was invited to a meeting um. With the Corps, where the Corps was gonna talk about. You know, right then, the rule was in effect, and the Corps is gonna talk talk about how we're gonna start enforcing, and this has been. A week ago, but I don't know if that meeting ever took place since the since the court decision came down.
Yeah, I guess me on the smaller side, I'm just trying to figure out how to continue replacing. The lappetated bridges, I'll be on handcuff by how big of a box I can put in.
Yeah.
Cause more or less what this rule is doing is enforcing this, either have short box covers or bent bridges.
Anybody got anything else to, John?
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, John.
I keep looking and it's like, who's the old guy? Thank you all.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Ben, before we lose, you just go on, there's your.
All right, so now we have DD one oh three.
What is he in trouble? You look like you're coming into the principal.
Um, so yeah, we got the reclass and annexation reports for uh DD one oh three and that project. This is maybe a little bit out of sequence with the normal. Uh process for these projects because the construction at isn't actually completely done. Um but being that it's April, um and kind of the timelines with levying. Uh the bills. Felt it was important and we're far enough along where we can, we can do this. Uh we're com- I'm comfortable with where the dollars are at. Um and what the project is gonna end up being. That we can go ahead and do the annexation to reclassification, and that way it can be levied, there's no risk of it not being levied this year.
We don't have a thousand pi- feet of pipe to lay yet and we.
No, it's a couple hundred feet, I think they're they're actually out of the farm ground, they're they're on the east side of the um. Elevator property. There and they were waiting, they had been waiting a little bit on some. The pipe supplier to provide like some elbows and this the the intake structure that's gonna go on the east side of the of the blacktop there. Um but I just talked with them and they're, I mean, as soon as they can get out there, they wanna get it. Get out there and get it done, so basically it's a couple hundred feet of pipe left. That intake and then um some regrading there in the road ditches to make that all flow. So that's kind of where that's at. So and yeah, as you know, it takes a little while, but when we file them, from the time we file them, and then you gotta do the notices and. Um the publish publishing in the newspaper and. Um let some time go by and then it's planting season two. Coming up here shortly, so by the time we get the hearings done, it'll be about. Time and you can set the levies and. It's possible to, if they they could get done with the construction, and I think the. I think the notice requirements are less for the completion hearing, so there's maybe an outside chance that we could do all. Three hearings on the same day, um but we'll see how the construction goes. A couple notes on this, I guess with the annexation, there's really not a lot of area. And in that report, the back page is, there's a map. Um and the hatched. The hatched parcels are ones that we're recommending for annexation. So there's several kind of up by the elevator, I suppose there's was a bunch of parcel splits over the years and they just didn't get in.
Is that why? I was wondering, how did that happen?
Yeah, that's just, sometimes that happens where over time. You know, when splits are made, it's supposed to be.
Doesn't get caught in the legal writing.
Yep, yep. Um so just kind of adding those back in, that's that's the main thing with this.
And then the. X assessed boundary line.
Oh, that's that's the parcels that are currently in the district. So it it doesn't have a boundary, that maybe that's not the right way of putting it, but. Those are the parts, cuz in a schedule, like what's on file with the with the county with you guys is a parcel ID. It isn't this, and there's sometimes there has acres associated with it, but there's not a line.
Any portion of this thing is, then it's then that whole forty is included, but the only the boundary line is assessed.
Yeah, so it's well, and that's that's how it'll be reclassified, and that boundary helps me determine. What stuff needs to be annexed, and this this one here isn't a good example of that. Uh I guess there is a little bit on the outside and then to the west of the elevator there, that's outside that. Black hatch dotted line. Cuz if we know that that those parcels are already in the district, if there's any lands outside of that that benefits. Those parcels need to be added in, that land needs to be added in, but here it's all kind of. Almost all pretty much internal additions. There's a few just. Small ones in the middle of town too. Um and then as far as the reclassification, this. If you remember, we did some kind of odd stuff with this project, cuz it crosses railroad tracks three times and we didn't want to. I mean, that would add a tremendous cost to the project to cross railroad tracks, cuz the district would had to foot the bill. Um and so we kind of rerouted part of it. And it really kind of split the district in two in a way. Um so as far as paying for this project, that's kind of one thing, and then. That's how I kind of set it up, I have a schedule to pay for this project. And then, so that basically would be used once and then it's done.
After that, the maintenance is divided.
Yep, then there's a maintenance, there's maintenance schedules that are separate, that separates out. Uh the district, like I've got a north and south Maine. And there's maps scattered throughout the report, but um. Yeah, right after the report, there's an overall benefit lands map and that shows all the tile. Um the in the blue is what. Is. Is or was being installed as part of this project. So we kind of rerouted a lot of that, where it normally crossed the tracks twice more and went directly to the ditch, well now there's a. Most of the south, about half of the district. Doesn't even go through this new tile now, but they've got a lot of relief, so they're being asked to help pay for that, I mean, their drainage coefficient did go up. We understand that. You know, the. It's still a hundred year old tile. And I understand that there's been some repairs that have been done on that, cuz it's not in the best of shape. Um but even still, like if they just, if any work is done in the future, and all that would really need to be done is a repair, it doesn't need to be improved anymore.
Size wise, it's adequate now.
Yeah, yep. And that that plays into what, I mean, what John was talking about, you guys were talking about with the competitive or the. That threshold, like you can go out, you you theoretically could go out and do a hundred and ninety six thousand dollars worth of. Repair on this without having an engineer, although, you know, those railroad crossings, that'd be a whole.
Yeah. And and if you ever change the size, if you upscale the size, then you have to have an engineer involved.
Yes.
So those rules still apply.
Yep. Um so that's that's essentially how it's set up, there's what I think four or five different schedules, so it's the it's the. Schedule to pay for the project, and then a north mains, future maintenance schedule, south main, future maintenance schedule. And then there's a lateral one. And then I combine laterals three and three A. Which those three and three A kind of come up to the. Elevator there. And as far as project costs, um I had. We're actually kind of looking to be about on target for what I had estimated in the preliminary report. Which was about three hundred and forty thousand for the project. I will say that. There was. In working with Terry, I was trying to get a handle on where the project costs sat, and I we found out, okay, yep. Actually, some of the work that was done on this project has already been paid for, cuz it was levied last year. Um and that was done under the old assessment schedule. And typically, when we do a project like this and we're saying, well, that old schedule's not fair for this. You know, we want to charge that under the new schedule. Um so I actually, and I've done this before, cuz sometimes we don't wanna keep carrying interest for years on projects that draw out for a while, and this. Didn't draw out, but same thing holds. I. In that combined schedule to pay for the project, I actually accounted for what they already paid. So this this schedule actually is for, I think, three hundred and ten thousand, and let's say. A parcel under the old schedule. Paid. Their share was more than it would have been for the new. I kind of credited them. For this one time schedule to offset that, what they've already paid, if that makes sense. It's basically I accounted for what they already paid, and if their proportion went up or down, like I I fixed that. Um so in essence, effectively, it's like, it's like they're getting charged based on the new schedules. Even though they already paid some money before. Other than that, I think those are the main. Things to touch on that I can think of, are there any questions?
Well, that's been a good project.
Yeah.
I know the blue you said is the new, but the black, those are still you, they're still functioning.
Yes.
Okay.
And there was a stretch there um. Where we actually did take out. The old tile. So from where.
We removed the old vein.
They removed the old vein, yep, for for a stretch there north of the tracks.
Just off that lateral three there to the almost to the edge of the pond, right?
Yeah. Yep, basically from. Where the black and blue lines intersect west of the ponds. And then until you kind of go a little bit west and north, and then it turns more sharply north. Where it turns more sharply north, that's where they left the old line, and you can see partially why, because. That tile actually goes underneath the. The building, we didn't think it did, like we had done some exploratory. Um but we did it on both ends of that and. They they were trying to locate that, cuz they'd kind of locate ahead. And they said, well, that goes under that building, so then we just, okay, we'll go back to our originally planned alignment for the rest of this. So that's a, that's a good thing, if you can get that done, especially when there's been problems, you know, cropping up. Pretty frequently with this, that was one of the things with this project is it's in poor condition, we gotta do something.
So.
And we've had issues of flooding and with the boat town, so hopefully that's gonna. Now we just hope we get the rain to see if.
Yeah, it'll. There's no guarantee that that would fix all their problems, because this line, we didn't do anything with, if there's an issue with that line. You know, this didn't. Address that, but at least brought it up to, you know, it's it's good to go from that point down. And if something more needs to be done here at some point, at least that part.
Yeah, they got a good outlet.
Yep.
It's gotta help some.
Yeah. Yep.
Awesome.
Alan, what about? The south main, this the new tile, it's.
Yep.
It makes its way over there. Um, I'm just curious about the connection of this part of it to this part, in the hole to the middle right here.
Yep, it's it's not connected.
It's not.
It's the along.
No connection.
Correct.
So this is still flowing here and there.
Yes. That's correct.
But it's. Right where that juncture is, that's separates south from north.
Yep.
So this is not again, so. Yeah, you're taking all this, and you've mentioned it already, this has got a lot smaller. Amount of tile outlet.
Right.
Existing current tile.
Yep, took a lot of area.
Trying to take all of this where it did before, cuz there, this was a real known problem. From the old system to the old, you know, I got diverted, but okay, so it's just its own old system carrying on.
Yeah, and. Just to. We can get you acres here real quick, so the whole district that. Outer boundary is about four hundred and fifty five acres. Um, the south main. Well, the north main, we can, because that's what came off the south main, is. That's two hundred and six acres. So it was four fifty five, you took off, yeah.
Forty percent.
Yeah, took that, I mean, that all that water used to go through there, and now it doesn't and won't.
It'll go on.
Yeah, and it into this new tile to the to the north and east, yep. But the the lagoons actually do still connect to that south main.
They do.
Yep, this is the outlet for the for the wastewater lagoons there is in the southwest corner. Of that, um so that still does connect into the south main tile. For the sanitary wastewater.
So. First, the step, you have nothing else, everything. Is good.
Yep.
When to. Accept. The annexation and the reclassification reports, I'd make a motion that we do accept the annexation and reclassification reports as we just will have.
Can we have a motion, do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a second, all those in favor? Unanimous, it carries.
Well, then, you talked about trying to coordinate the hearing. Reclassification and maybe. The completion.
Yeah, we wouldn't schedule the completion.
Not today.
Not today.
But you're hoping that might actually.
How far could possibly pan out, cuz.
How far out do we need to set the hearing?
Uh. I was thinking sometime in June. If that works, does that work for your guys' timeline as far as levying stuff? Is that a little tight?
I think it will be okay, because I have to get to reclassification and I've already started.
Okay. Okay, because when do you have to set the levy stuff by, is that July one or?
Well. Yeah, like maybe. Um, mid-June.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, so maybe.
Because when do the notices get sent out?
So the end of July, I really need to get that.
Everything done and finalized.
Could we? And I'm saying this somewhat based on the possibility of the completion hearing, so it's a one shot deal. Set those for June twelfth.
That would work for me. If that.
If we can do that for everything, the hearing.
Well, that would be the, that would be the hearing for the annexation, the reclassification would be June twelfth and with the whole vote. Between now and then, the completion hearing, because they're gonna get, they're gonna get that done here.
They should, they should, yeah.
So that would fall in, because you said that doesn't require a timeline, plus this is a pretty far timeline, I mean, we're.
Will that give us, you have her time to get her stuff done and then also be published?
Oh, for the annexation, reclassification, yes.
Then notified.
True.
I think so.
The, the rule there is that. Go ahead. It, it, you have to have, uh, it has to be twenty days between when you publish it. And send the notices and a minimum of twenty days between that time and when you have the hearings. Um, so that.
That's sad to be out by the first part of May.
Yeah.
Or would you prefer that we push it to? The nineteenth of June.
But is that gonna give you enough time to get everything done? That'd be a tighter, I mean.
No, no, I said twelve.
I know, but the nineteenth would push it even farther back, she has to have things.
That's why I'm trying to find a happy medium between getting it done and getting that levy information put together. You say, Carrie.
What, what's the? Is June twelfth the earliest that we can do it, pretty much, or?
The week earlier.
Those people get their work done.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, and then we may miss the completion hearing, well.
Well, you can't have, I can't hear, have the other one, can we without a completion hearing?
We, we can have the.
That's just trying to kill as many birds with one shot. Be done with.
Yeah, okay.
You think the ninth, the twelfth is too late?
I, I honestly, I don't think so. I, yeah, gotten everything, I've started on everything, so I wouldn't think that it would push me. Too far behind.
Neither one of those, I think, is. Probably gonna be fine, I. The completion hearing, it's got the same sort of requirement than is the twenty day thing. So if it was June fifth, they'd have to be done, I mean, they still would have a few weeks to get. To be done, and then we could still fit it in even. You know, in that timeframe.
Put, put the twelfth.
They'd have to have it done by what, by the fifteenth then, to make sure we create the paper, because we had to have it in the paper by noon on the.
It's twenty count. Yeah, you're right. It does, that does twist a little bit, because you gotta get it in the, in the newspaper and those don't come out every day.
Right, so we'd have to have it by the, have it done. To make it by the.
Yeah.
Right, but what I'm saying is, the paper comes out on me too, but we have to have the thing, but. Oh, it's ten now, it's not new, it's not new anymore?
It's on there, actually.
It's ten now, okay.
Well, for twelve. Is doable for the levy work. If it doesn't work, then it's fine.
Yeah, just do that a week later.
All right, so do the twelve?
The twelfth, I'd make a motion that we set the hearing for the annexation of the classification. Uh, for DD one zero three. For Monday, June twelfth. Nine AM.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay, we got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Nine AM.
Nine AM, it's in the phone.
On the book. I can scratch this out several times. And I usually do.
That's our running joke of the day.
Okay.
Okay, do we have anything else in drainage?
I got a question for you.
Sure.
Got a phone call from a gentleman from in Wright County, and it has to do with this. And you're familiar with it. I think it's just D D nine.
Okay.
Don't send it here.
Yeah.
And they had a request to annex land into the Tempe joint district. That's never happened.
It did happen, actually.
Well, something, it never got finalized or something.
It never got reclassified.
Never good.
So the, the annexation was approved, but if you, if you tried to levy anything. That it's not on a schedule, their, their parcels are not on.
So if you go over in Wright County, it shows it as a. Joint district with nine, because ours doesn't show it that way.
I don't think. I don't think they have it known on their maps.
Totally, and. He was, he was, I think we got it resolved, because he was trying to do. Put a tile line into the outlet there and. Neighbor says, no, you're not running across my property, and he said they can't stop you from doing that.
Okay.
But he was wondering if it was a. A joint district, I says, no, I don't think it is, and our maps don't show it as a joint district.
It is not, because of the. Reclassification.
Yeah, I, I don't know the legalities of that, truthfully, because the annexation. There's, there's a lot of paperwork that had both counties signing this stuff to, to annex and become a joint district. And that stuff is all signed, so I don't know if just because the reclassification wasn't done to classify those parcels. I mean, the annexation brought, technically brought those parcels into the district. But again, if you try to assess anything, you can't assess them.
It was really not completed.
It's not, yeah, it's in the middle of the process.
And that's kind of what I told him. And I, I, I was talking with him and his lawyer in Des Moines at the time, and I think he got his problem resolved.
Okay.
I think.
But this is the second time we've had this thing.
I think. It's just a blame, it's been out there for how many years, ten, twelve, fifteen years, I guess.
Yeah.
Is that started?
Last year or the year before?
About a year ago.
That's what I was thinking, about a year ago. Yeah.
Heading of it, because it's a very small area.
Yeah, it's a small, it's like four.
They would, they would end up costing them more than they would probably ever benefit.
Well, and I will say too, that part of that annexation, actually, there was annexation into the district on the Humboldt County side too. And though it's the same thing, it's the same thing for them, they're not. They wouldn't get, they're not being assessed either.
For the benefit of the district.
Right.
Really not benefiting. So it's almost in their better interest, probably not.
Who's that?
The annexation areas.
Well, if, if they're being annexed. Well, they're, they're benefiting, that's why they would be annexed, because they're benefiting.
County, you can make that argument, in Wright County, it's the outlet.
Yeah.
So the outlet's in Wright County.
Yes. Yeah.
Right, county.
Yeah, to me, it appears to be a stream, but maybe it's not, and that's a big controversy, is that a, is that a manmade structure or is it a stream? It looks like a river, but.
On the north side of highway, I believe that's highway three, doesn't that go right by there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right at that corner.
There's a little from here to there.
Yeah.
Threw a dumps cross here again, this here's the area that was under.
Yep, and that part looks to be man, I mean.
Looks like it never has been maintained.
Right.
Not at all, no.
And if they were intended to originally be a part of that. And weren't included, that's probably what, because it doesn't show on any of the Wright County maps or anything, so nobody would have any.
Quest to tear beaver dams out of there and this and that, and you know, and we get feedback, oh, you can't touch that, it's natural strain and all this stuff. You know, so. It's just been.
How do you prove it then that it's, it is made, made not a stream or a creek?
I think you dig back in the records.
Yeah.
Would it be why it's supposed to do that, or?
Do we approach Wright County and? Or where are we going? Looking the other direction, we aren't gonna make any progress.
You keep kicking that can.
So do we wanna leave it alone, or do we wanna fix it? So the next time this guy calls. We did, we have this discussion a year ago. Left to go on.
Yeah, because while we, I mentioned it to Wright County and they, they seen, they seen it a lot on their plate at the time.
And you kind of came up with that, that illusion is right, that just. Nobody really wanted to move it forward and just kind of.
Yeah, that was my understanding from a year ago, is that unless a landowner or somebody was wanting.
Push it.
To push it, then.
Yeah.
That's where it was left.
Like us, we can't go out there and say, hey, farmer, you need to make this a drainage district. We can't do that, he has to request it.
Petition for it.
Petition for it.
And the original, if you remember the history of this, original people that. They're again, kind of petitioned in Wright County, in Wright County. And wanted that. Little chalk added, since passed away and it, that it kind of.
Yeah.
It kind of died with them.
Yeah.
And no one else took off the torch and was open in Wright County saying, hey.
Finish it, finish it.
Yeah.
One, and, and one thing I'll say on the drainage side of things, is if that stretch. Particularly that first stretch is in poor shape and there's beaver dams and stuff in it. It's really hurting the people in Humboldt County, because it's holding back their water. So, yeah, it's.
Well, something we need to probably.
Maybe touch base back with the Wright County folks, delayed because it's Wright County.
I know.
Dean.
Dean, yeah, I talked with Dean. No, no petitioning, no big.
I'll see Dean again, because he'll be over here to Humboldt, June. I'll visit with him about.
Move with it or?
That's the thing, landowners really don't care, this is a little change of. Orders.
But it makes a difference when we have talked about it, well, it was brought up fifteen years ago, then it was brought up last year. And it seems like it's bringing someone more. So, that's my opinion.
Yep, okay, I agree with that, well, maybe I'll visit with Wright County a little bit, see if we can get it finalized.
And if there's no ankles for them.
Yeah, there's no. Yep.
Isn't that kind of like you came up with in your film?
Yeah.
I asked Colin about it, he said, I, there's just no direction.
Okay.
Anything else going on in the drainage world? You guys got a lot of water up there, you're trying to move it?
Not a ton.
We're looking.
The, the river actually, I was surprised, it's getting.
High as it is.
Full.
Yeah.
But there's not a lot of excess moisture.
You guys got a lot of. Things going on for projects up that way or?
There's actually, there actually isn't, and I think. From what I've been hearing, that's kind of across the board around, around the state in drainage.
We don't need it, because it's dry. So everybody's kind of sitting on their hands.
And inflation and some of the, the farm economy inputs and. Yeah, pipe prices have gone up and I, uncertainty for future stuff, that there's a lot of things I think you could point at. Some people might say, well, there's seven dollar corn or whatever, so that should be all kinds of money, but. It's not seven quarter, seven dollar corn today isn't the same as it was fifteen years ago.
For right now, it's not for this fall.
Right, right, that too.
It's all five dollar corn.
Yep.
Yeah.
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 So, no. Contractors call me, a lot of them have been calling me saying, you got any projects coming, and I think some of them, you know, work. In, for counties and stuff too, but with inflation, you guys just have to do less projects, because you only have so much money. And if it costs more, you just.
Do less.
Do less. So, yeah, contractors are kind of hungry for order.
That they are.
So, there is a. Uh, did you mention that with the DD one twenty five thing?
Oh, over, no, I didn't get to that.
I was gonna mention that, because there is a possibility, I talked with Mark and I might go meet with him today, since I'm over here, but. Um, DD one twenty five was a project that was done several years ago, uh, like an ag well closure, there was a. A pond and stuff at the bottom end.
Yeah.
Um, over by just south of Bradgate, I think. And at the outlet of that. Mark Dickey, I think is his name.
Mark.
He, he's, he called and he said that there's a problem in there, some rip rap basically has. Washed out and it's, there's, it's causing a problem. He did say that a couple of years ago, there was the same issue and he must have maybe come to you guys and. Rip rap was put in there and it's since washed out again. Um. So he's, he's wondering, you know, should more rip rap be put in there or what should be done? Um, and it sounds to me like at this point, if it was done two years ago.
It doesn't big enough.
And it was, yeah, there's something more than just, just let's just dump some more rock in there, because you're gonna keep doing it.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, there you go, drop bigger rock.
We haven't had that much water.
Right, that's one thing that's surprising, if that was done two years ago, there really hasn't been any gully washers. Since then, so. Um, that's, that's something that's kind of on the radar and I, I wanted to talk to you all before going over there and spending time on it. Um, but I guess. It sounds to me like it would be beneficial to go look at it and see like, is there something that we can do that would be more of a permanent solution? Instead of just keeping dumping rock into here.
Or like you said, is it, they just didn't put, they're gonna rock.
Yeah.
And that, that it, there's a, there actually is a whole design, design process for rip rap. And we normally don't have to worry about that around here, because the water's moving so slow, but in places where there's a lot of grade. There's actually a whole design process for how big do you need to have the rip rap, so that's not getting washed, yep. So I don't know if that's something that you'd like me to go.
I think investigate or. Kill two birds with one stone, because is it? More than just the size of the rip rap, and Colin would know more by looking at it than, you know, I was.
Yeah. It might have been just to put too small a rip rap in.
It, it could be the location too, that's what, that's what, and I, you know, I wasn't involved with it, so I'm not familiar with.
Yeah.
The specifics, but Mark's made it sound like the location of it was one thing that he believed, like it was put right where. In a bad place, in his opinion, so I.
It's basically the over spillway.
Okay.
The way it sounds to me like.
Yeah, it's the outlet, not the inlet.
Right, yeah.
See, either it's the outlet pipe or it's the spillway that's washing, so the outlet pipe.
I'm, I'm not clear on that.
Yeah, that's what you, go on, take a look.
Yeah.
See what the problem is, give us an idea.
Okay, I have a bunch of pictures of it when we were all out there.
That's a long time ago.
I know. I have pictures in here when we were all out there in the group.
Yeah, pictures.
Yeah.
You've got them from that far, I've got all mine saved archived.
I don't get that far, I just keep.
You can't picture a year, it's easy to find.
You keep paying for more apples. I'm too tight. I'm doing, I'm not doing no more.
I think it'd be worth.
Yeah.
It's gotta be done, and then you can make an determination, is it early, central, or is it gonna require a little extra? Something.
And then I don't know if you wanted to.
I do.
Come with.
Yes.
Okay, and you have time, you have time this morning, you think, to stop by there?
Uh, Colin mentioned that, and I said I'd mention it to everybody, but then I must have forgotten you were gonna be here.
Well, and I wasn't necessarily planning on it, but I actually have several. Things that I could be doing over here, and that was one of them.
Yeah.
And I gotta go check out other projects. Reports. Yeah.
Do.
Yep.
Appreciate you being here for this. And, yeah, I just, like Rick said, I think, he looks at it, it's like, wow, maybe I just didn't. Somebody didn't go through the rip rap formula.
Yeah.
Or is it a design flaw?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't have, it's the outlet pipe that releases from the pond that we're talking about, or it's a spillway or what, now it's spillway, we haven't had that much rain.
Right.
Maybe there's more water going in there than.
Than what we realized.
We haven't got a lot of water in general.
No.
That's, remember, push that great over the.
Yeah, I remember the grate was a great.
And I don't know that that's ever been brought back.
Been redone. I've seen new style in.
Great over the hole than we did any.
That's on the south side of this, the gravel, there's. I'd like to know, I haven't been out by there to see how much water backed up into that area there.
Yeah.
Into his pond, I haven't seen it forever.
It's like Sandy says, hard to believe there's much water backing up anyplace, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think looking at it, and then you could say, okay, yeah. I'm thinking, I don't know, you don't know till you.
But this was, uh, April fourth, two, twenty sixteen.
Well.
Sorry.
Anything else in drainage? A motion to, uh.
Eric had anything?
No, I've had a couple of calls, um, Tyler, some call, he's got a rather large one this week, that. Um, he talked to Sandy about, and Doug Marshall was gonna go check that out, and then. Another one. That Corey Benz is gonna go check.
Yeah, that one was pretty evident.
Yeah, so I had.
Did you say there was a, um. A letter, in order or something like that, too, that was.
Yeah.
Was bending.
Um. Okay, so I did talk to Ben, and the air is, has to be.
Okay.
That's okay, um. I've had a few more calls with, um, people that I had, still have to get back with and find out what the issue is, but it's kind of all been like the end of last week.
That's fine.
With. More calls, so I'm getting back with them, but.
Yep, yep. That time of year. Okay, and ducking up in drainage?
Well, it's more than a second.
Okay, we got a motion, second, all those in favor? Okay, we were out at ten oh three.
Thank you, Colin.
Okay, so now we need to appoint Brittany Peters, ARNP, to replace Sam Sexy as medical examiner investigator for Humboldt County.
If you qualify, yes.
Yeah, there is a letter that was sent to all of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was, yeah, from, um, Dr. Paul.
Dr. Paul, yeah.
Yeah, Dr. Paul. It's not in here, but.
Yeah, I read through that.
Yeah.
So she is qualified, and Sam Sexy is no longer available, so I would make the movement that we do appoint Brit- Brittany Peters. Replace Sam Sexy as ma- medical examining, ma- medical examiner investigator for Humboldt County.
Working under Paul.
Under Doc Paul.
Under Doc Paul.
I will second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor?
All right.
Okay, unanimous, it carries. Okay, committee report. Hey.
On Wednesday, the twelfth. I've got a call and a complaint. Rock recovery. Greater pulled some stuff out in the driveway, it turned out to be nothing. But looked at that, and also looked at a drainage ditch. Uh, up the field. Rick could call me on.
Yeah, farmer called me, I wasn't wanting to crawl down in the drainage ditch, so he called Dave.
Then I had, um, animal shelter meeting at six thirty that night, on the twelfth, that's all I had last week.
Last week in your nice days, there, the girls' track team took care of all the animals up at Mop, and said, hand them out. I think everyone and dogs went back in with their tongue. I don't know if they did it, were doing it for their, part of their running for the day, but there was a bunch of girls up there, and then the dogs looked like they were dragging them back towards the shed.
We got lots of dogs, we got inundated with cats up there.
Needs to be a bulletin for age, we did, we got a lot of cats.
Lot of cats to adopt. Please.
Please and thank you, right?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't have any official extracurricular meetings last week, did a lot and look at a couple of the drainage things that were mentioned, but that was it.
Okay, I'm, I'm going back to April fourth in public safety meeting. And at eight, and then, uh, just this last, last week on Thursday, I met with, uh. Uh, Dave Minnichus and Ben Boots out at the landfill, I think it was Thursday, wasn't it?
Right.
Friday, okay. Friday, and, um, talked over the, they're surveying also, the actual pile, right now, they got pins put in the flags. So now we're gonna get fancy quotes and moving forward with that. That's it for me.
I had no meetings this week, or last week, I guess, this week.
On Wednesday, the twelfth, I spent about three hours on the phone with Iowa Workforce Development in Des Moines, and then our director, trying to get everything. Nailed down, that was it.
What was their response for us? Were they mad?
They're not happy, but.
Do they understand what everybody's doing?
I mean, okay, you've got half of the state leaving, and they're still.
That's what I'm saying.
Exactly, I mean, and it's. They're actually blaming it on all of us. Yeah.
Oh, well.
And I, I, I'm, you know what, I'm not feeling guilty about it anymore, I'm, I'm, I'm over it. Beyond over it.
So next week, we have, uh, is that the budget?
Yeah.
For the twenty-fourth at nine AM.
Yes, budget near nine AM.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, but that's it.
All right.
I'll second.
Got a second, all those in favor? Unanimous. We're out at. Thank you.